I'd like to call the Glassboro zoning board and just have a regular business meeting for July twenty first, two thousand and twenty two to order. Terry, could you please read the opening statement?
Pursuant to the Open Publics Meeting Act, I hereby announce that adequate notice this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by adopting the schedule of regular monthly meetings for the year two thousand and twenty two. Which schedule was posted on the Borough Hall bulletin board, now to the South Jersey newspapers and filed with the Borough Clerk.
All right, all rise, we'll salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Moonen.
Here.
Ms. Camiola.
Here.
Mr. Harvey is not. Mr. Jimenez?
Here.
Mr. Santora is excused. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Perner?
Here.
Ms. Wayman?
Here.
Mr. Casabut?
Here.
And Ms. Adamson?
Here.
All right. Mr. Ellis, would you like to swear in our professionals?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask each of you to raise your right hand. And do each of you swear a firm testimony about to give us true and correct, to best your knowledge, information and belief in any application that's going to be heard tonight?
Yes.
That was two yeses, Mr. Chair.
And.
Okay.
Come still.
All I say, right.
Yeah.
So, you know, Mr. Chairman, maybe a bit of housekeeping before we get rolling with some of the applications identified on the agenda is ZB twenty two dash O one re- up, strike that. Uh, ZB twenty two dash O five, A B three LLC, four ten North Delcy Drive, block eight lots two and three. So use variance amended preliminary and final major site plan. The applicant requested an adjournment until the August eighteenth list. So they asked that I make an announcement, Mr. Chairman members. The announcement is that no further notice will be given on this application, A B three LLC, four ten North Delcy Drive. So if you're here for that application, please come back same place, same time, seven o'clock on August eighteenth. Uh, and we'll, uh, one hopes hear the matter then. Thank you. Is anybody here on that application?
Nope, okay.
The answer's no. Take it away, Mr. Chair.
All right, everybody has a copy of the minutes. Um, any questions, comments or concerns? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. All right, everybody has a copy of the bills. And have a chance to look at them.
Make a motion that we pay the bills?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Do we have any incoming and outgoing correspondence? Nope, okay. All right. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak, however, not on what is on the agenda for this evening? Nobody? Let's move on to our application, ZB twenty two dash zero one Restore New Jersey LLC, three hundred William Dalton Drive, block four oh nine, lot fifteen point zero four. It's in the zone C five, use variance permit recreational cannabis sales in a C five zone.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Phillips Smith. I'm an attorney at Givens P.C. And I am here today on behalf of Restore and J L L C. As was mentioned, the applicant is seeking a use variance pursuant to section seventy D one of municipal land use law.
You know, we do have some people here who may be interested in this application. And I would just ask if you could keep your voice up a little bit, because it's an odd room.
Sure. Absolutely. So we are here seeking a D one use variance, and it is a bit of an odd situation. We are currently, the applicant is currently leasing the property that's located at block four oh nine, lot fifteen point oh four. And they have a zoning permit already in place and a building permit in place in order to allow for the fit out of that existing building as an alternative treatment center, which is a center that allows for the sale of cannabis for medical use. As I said, that building is being, uh, fitted out right now under construction. The exterior or the footprint of the building is not changing, the parking lot is not changing, and that's going to continue to be true. What we're here seeking this evening is permission to allow for the site to also serve as a class five use for the sale of adult recreational use cannabis. Interestingly, this site was approved and received zoning approval prior to when a new ordinance was adopted here in town that limited adult use to the C three and C four and limited all cannabis uses to the C three and C four districts within the town. The applicant, however, pursuant to state law, is allowed to have both medical and adult, as long as they pursue that licensing path, which is a pathway that's open to them. In order to make the license to the state to convert their medical use to an adult use, they first have to receive permission for that use. So we are here before you. As I mentioned, there's no site plan associated with this application because the building has already been approved. It was previously approved for other use and because it's been approved for the medical use, and we are not making any additional changes. Our testimony tonight will start with some operational testimony, so we can all understand kind of the nuances of the medical cannabis sales and adult recreational sales. And then we have our planner here this evening who can provide testimony as to how this meets the criteria for a D one variance. We did provide notice in accordance with your local regulations and state law. We provided that affidavit to the Board Secretary in advance of the meeting. So with that, I'd like to call my first witness.
Well, you probably have more than one witness, yes?
Yes.
Well, why don't you call them all and we'll swear them in, and we'll figure out who they are or find out who they are. Two?
Yes.
All right, well, fellas, come on, come on down. Uh, first, let me ask each of you to raise your right hand. And do each of you swear a firm testimony about to give us true and correct, to best your knowledge, information and belief?
I do.
Well, it was two yeses and for no particular reason. Uh, your name and title, position?
Robert Stanley, C O O, Restore Dispensaries.
Welcome, Mr. Stanley, and you're the chief operating officer for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
All right, sounds great. And, sir?
My name is John Barron, it's spelled B A R R E E. And I'm a principal planner with the firm Hire, Rule and Associates, licensed planner in New Jersey.
Okay. Now, um, forgive me, Mr. Barry, we're not familiar with you, we just haven't seen you before. But you're obviously of some years, you're not a young man. You've been at this a little bit, uh, are you a licensed planner? Give us just a little bit of, I don't want to formally call it, but you, just a little bit about your background.
Sure, I have a Masters of City and Regional Planning degree from Rutgers University. I've been a licensed planner since two thousand and fourteen. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Most of my work is actually representing boards like yours. Um, I represent currently, I believe, seven different boards, mostly much further north. This is, uh, you haven't seen me because I haven't been here before, so.
Well, there you go.
Um, but I, I have testified recently in Mettuce and in Asbury Park, a few other places.
Well, here's, here's your chance to add Glassboro, welcome.
Thank you.
And, um, Mr. Chairman members, we've got a professional planner, we've got the chief operating officer, so please take it away, councilor.
Absolutely. So we're gonna start with our chief operating officer. Would you like him to sit or take my spot at the podium?
It's up to you, it's your application, however you all would like to do it.
Long as we get to hear them.
Yeah, we just want to be able to hear them.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. So, Mr. Stanley, if you could start by introducing yourself to the board and elaborating more about your position with Restore.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us. Um, again, my name is Robert Stanley. I'm the chief operating officer for Restore Dispensaries. Um, my background is originally in hospitality. That spans everything from opening restaurants in Philadelphia, Key West, up and down, um, back in Philadelphia. And then I was a food service director for an extended care and retirement facility right side, right outside of the Philadelphia area, um, where I dealt with a lot of compliance, Department of Health issues, inspections, um, and those kind of things. And then I have met a consultant for Restore and was brought on Restore for the hospitality aspect of it. We opened our first dispensary in Frankfurt section of Philadelphia in two thousand and eighteen. We were the first medical marijuana facility in Philadelphia limits. Um, and then soon after that, about six months after that, we opened a facility in the Elkins Park section, right above Philadelphia. Then we proceeded to open up one in Doylestown, Pennsylvania, Pottstown, Pennsylvania, Lancaster, Pennsylvania, and then Yaden, Pennsylvania. So we, we've hit a lot of different areas, whether it's an urban area, and then obviously if anybody's familiar with Lancaster, um, a very suburban area. Um, so it's been great seeing it come from, um, the first dispensary in Philadelphia. We're also the only, one of the only privately run dispensary groups in Pennsylvania left. Majority of them are all larger multi-state organization companies. Um, that's something that we take a lot of pride in, um, pride in that way.
Now, as I understand it, the property is currently approved and under construction to be an alternative treatment center. Can you talk a little bit about what it means to the alternative treatment center and what that allows you to do?
As an alternative treatment center, um, currently in, as far as Pennsylvania and with New Jersey as being medical, um, we help people that are, that have different conditions for an alternative source of pain management, anything from anxiety, different, there's twenty one different, uh, conditions that you can have to get a medical marijuana card. Um, in Pennsylvania, um, that's, that's, that's pretty much it with, with that.
Tell me a little bit about the patient experience at an alternative treatment center. If someone wanted to purchase cannabis there, how would they come into the store, who would they see?
So first you have to get, um, your medical marijuana card is your prescription from a certified doctor. Um, in Pennsylvania, you have to get certified to get your medical marijuana card. Does your prescription, you come into our dispensaries after you receive your card. You can only come into the dispensary with your medical marijuana card. Um, we do suggest, strongly suggest, a consultation with our pharmacists that are always on staff to go over a path of treatment for all of our patients that we have. After they get a recommendation from the pharmacist, they go and they deal with our dispensary agents. Um, sometimes you'll hear them called blood tenders in the recreational market, but again, in Pennsylvania, we are medical. Um, so they'll work with our dispensary agents who we, uh, have set up fantastic training for to help the patients also navigate their cu- uh, plan of action for their medication that they receive from us.
Now, here in Glassboro, you are already approved to operate this alternative treatment center, is that correct?
Yes.
And you received local zoning approval to do so?
Yes.
And you've also received your state license to do so?
Yes.
Are, are you under construction currently?
Yes.
When do you anticipate that construction being completed?
We're expecting construction to be complete towards the end of August.
And when do you expect to open?
We're, uh, tentative date, uh, beginning of October.
Now, under the current state regulations, is there a pathway for you to take your medical license and be able to convert to a license that will allow you to sell to all of us?
Yes.
And in order to have that license, you first need to get zoning approval?
Yes.
In the course of this application, did you work to meet with the local, uh, police department to discuss this location?
Yes.
And when were those discussions?
Uh, we, we met with the police department in two thousand and nineteen originally, and then we met with the chief up until, uh, about a month ago and had, uh, some discussions about our operations and our procedures that we, that we run at Restore.
And do you have a security plan for the store that you're able to discuss with the police chief?
Yes.
Did he express any concerns that were security related?
No.
At, at this dispensary, whether it's medical or whether it's adult, are you allowed to sell alcohol or tobacco products?
No.
Are you allowed to have consumption of cannabis on the property?
No.
Uh, do you take certain actions to prevent people from consuming on the property?
Uh, yes, the sec- heavy, besides the monitoring systems that we have with our security cameras, um, we do have a very extensive security team that work at the dispensaries that monitor outside operations and the inside operations of the dispensary.
And you would have that security team either for medical or adult use, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Will you be disp- displaying any paraphernalia that's visible to the outside?
No.
Are you able to comply with the Glassboro signage requirements for cana- cannabis dispensaries?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit about how you anticipate deliveries under the medical system?
Deliveries under the medical system, um, we do have a secure delivery area, um, next to our building. So the, it would be an unmarked vehicle, similar to a FedEx small sprint van that would come up. It is unmarked. They do come at random times throughout the week. Um, we would expect probably about two deliveries per day, again, at random times, just so people can't have a schedule of what's going on with our deliveries. Um, and then, again, those deliveries would be taken into a secure door and then into our dispensary. Um, that would be in conjunction with our security team and the management team to walk that delivery back with their armed guards that are normally the security drivers. And then we would go through the delivery to make sure that everything matches the manifest that we're go- getting from the local processors. And then it's, again, all under camera, um, and then they would proceed and kind of, it's very.
Yep. Will your system of delivery change if you become an adult use?
No.
So?
No.
How will your oper- operations change at all if you were to transition from a medical use to an adult use dispensary?
The operations won't change that much at all, except for the fact that we would have certain times and, um, preferential service for medical patients that would be coming into the dispensary.
Parking. Uh, currently you are approved at the site with a number of parking spaces already located there, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, in considering your, your operational use, are you also considering, uh, leasing parking spaces somewhere else in and around the shopping center?
Yes.
And that is something that you would look to in the future, is that correct?
Yes, and we're currently looking.
That's fine. Last thing would just be to talk about the flow of patients in and out. Are there ways that you help to expedite people to come into the site, uh, purchase and leave, things like deliveries or pre-ordering?
We have, I would say, about eighty five percent of our ordering in Pennsylvania. Um, that's, we can go on, and from New Jersey, from folks that we've spoken to at different dispensaries and professionals in the industry. It's about eighty five percent is online ordering or call ahead ordering. Um, so, and that pretty much sets it up in timeframe, so you have, it's half hour increments where you set up for se- a certain amount of either patients or consumers for adult use per half hour to where we can regulate how many people are coming in per half hour. Um, with the flow of medical patients, if we were to be granted an adult use license, um, our medical patients would have first two hours of operations just for medical purchases only. No adult use, uh, consumers would be allowed to come in at that time. And then once we are open for normal hours for consumers and medical patients, the medical patients would have preferential treatment for expediated lines that go through, um, for purchases.
And the hours of operation, I think we indicated in the written submission that it would be proposed for eight A M. to eight P M. Monday through Saturday and nine A M. to five P M. on Sunday. Is that what you anticipate your hours will be?
That's what we anticipate, yes.
And what was Sunday?
Sunday's anticipated to be nine A M. to five P M. Now, of course, yeah, conditions might shift slightly.
Well, you don't have to anticipate it, you got the chief operating officer right there.
That's anticipated.
You know, right.
I believe I've covered everything that we need to cover, so I don't have any further questions. And I assure the board that. We will be calling our planner up to go through the, the criteria.
Can I?
Any questions?
I think Ms. Camiola does.
I have a, I have a few of them.
Mm-hmm.
That road is almost impossible, uh, Bowe Boulevard, to travel on during most parts of the day. Um, because of the flow of college students moving in and out and professors and everybody else in the, just the town. I have sat through five lights just trying to get across Main Street because there was no way, the traffic in front of me, which would be the traffic going in front of your place, was moving.
Okay.
Um, people were trying to make a left turn out of that building, which is nearly impossible. Well, left turn out of, out of, um, at the ti- at this point, out of Shop Right. And you couldn't do it, out of Duffield's. They would turn and block up all the traffic. I don't see the recreational use as helping that situation at all. I mean, it is a terrible traffic problem, and I've had several people talk to me about that. Um, it, you talk about, you know, there's gonna be a certain time for these people, a certain time for that people. Well, what happens if people wait for two hours and they haven't been waited on yet, are you gonna throw them out? They're probably gonna wind up still being there while the next group is coming in, and you don't have enough parking for all that. So I have a hard time grasping this other section, the, the medical section, one thing. I, I have some familiarity with this because I was, I've been responsible for bringing people with medical marijuana issues to their site. I've had to drive them down, early in the procedure, I had to drive them down to, um, the shore because there were very few places that would accept the, um, uh, medical marijuana cards. And I'm talking about, you know, I packed lunch because it was like three hours. And now it's up here and people can, a lot of these people can drive themselves, and they don't come back for three hours. Uh, and it's because they're, the places are so backed up. So the medical marijuana, to me, takes preference, obviously. People want to be recreated, let them go someplace else, where they're not tying up traffic and it's not. That, that building, I mean, it was a, it was a.
Nursery.
Nursery. I don't, I don't know, there wasn't that much parking for the nursery. There were problems when it was a nursery that they were parking on the street to get the kids. But that tied up all the people behind them, so there isn't like an extra lane. Um, and there's several businesses, of course, Shop Right, which whose parking lot is full on a most, on most times.
Do you want them to respond?
Yeah, I, well, okay.
Well.
What are you gonna do about a situation like that?
No, you're on a roll, but it's just that, uh.
What are you gonna do about a situation like that? I mean.
There you go.
To, to control the, the traffic.
You, you framed it.
For the traffic, we, we do anticipate, um, I know that some of the dispensaries had the thousands, all the different things like that. The, the professionals that we've talked to in the industry, we don't expect to see that volume. And as more dispensaries open up, that volume of people will thin out. In our, the parking lot that we have now with the spaces that we have, we feel like with the formulas that we have, that we figured out how many patients we can see with the amount of P O S terminals, the point of sale terminals that we have in the dispensary, then it'll be a faster turnaround for the patients to get in and out. With some of those other dispensaries, they had maybe five, six.
How many parking spaces do you have available?
Could we, twenty five.
Twenty five, I'm sorry.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a number for dispensaries of medical marijuana in the South Jersey area, which is Gloucester, I guess Camden, Atlantic? Do you by any chance have a number?
Not up to my head, I don't know.
Twenty five parking slots, yeah.
All right, well, the mar- medical marijuana is, is already going in. What is your contingency if you are granted for recreational, where are you gonna put all these people? Because as you know, and we all know, this is a college town.
Exactly.
And once word gets out, if you're granted the recreational, it's gonna be a shootout like at the O K Corral. So what is your plan? Because you're not gonna be able to use the Shop Right parking lot because they most likely will not allow it, and there's not enough room in there as it is.
Well, it's not their lot anymore.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they have to stand on their own grounds.
Yeah, but they re- they regulate that a lot.
No, 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 I get that, but I mean, they have to stand on their own grounds.
So what is your, what is your parking contingency plan?
We, we have a couple of different ideas that we were talking, that we spoke to the chief about, um, that we are in the process of looking for some alternative parking, off, off-premise parking. That would be for employees, that almost is like a call lot. Where we, we would have it, then we would have our security there as well and let people know when they're okay to come back to the dispensary and, and pick up and purchase.
There's nothing around there.
I'm sorry.
There's nothing around there.
We have, we have a couple of different things that we're looking at right now, and that we would like to submit as we, we look further into that.
And we, we would stipulate, is it a condition of approval if the board were to go in that direction, that we would provide an off-site location for additional parking?
When will the medical dispensary open up into Glassboro, because this is already approved?
We're, we're looking for in October.
And then are you planning to open a recreational or adult use at the same time?
Same time, same place, is the sense I got, we're not.
Wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't be the exact same at times, just to clarify. But I think, believe the state regulations require it to open first, and then we could apply for the new, uh, converted license.
Okay.
So it would open as medical, and if we did receive these variants, we could then apply to the state to convert to also adult use, so.
So it might not be in October.
It'll open in October for medical?
Yeah, but, but not for recreational.
Right.
Correct.
And the state may not approve it eventually anyhow.
No.
It.
No, I think they've got the green light from the state.
No, she just said they had to reapply for the second part.
Not necessary.
Well, please, right, but suffice it to say, while where you're sitting, your expectation should be, they're gonna get the license. It's gonna happen. Um, so that's why they're here, because it's really what does the town think about the, you know, what's the town's big idea? I mean, that's fundamentally what's going on. Um, we don't need to concern ourselves with them getting the license or not getting the license, but you have to assume that, you know. Their players, the gentleman just told us number one in Philly, they were the first ones in Frankfurt area, Philadelphia, so they've been around the block.
Other question down here. And that is that, um, I noticed one of the locations that, uh, over near Sam's on forty two and a few other places that you ride by, we see a line of people all the way around the building. Do you run across that in some of your facilities, and if so, something like Glassboro, we're so convinced, uh, do you have any insight on how you would address that?
We have some high-volume dispensaries in Pennsylvania. Our Pottstown location is very high-volume, especially medical dispensary. Um, I'm sorry, excuse me. Um, we don't have the, occasionally on one of the days, everybody's heard of four twenty, which is considered a ma- medical marijuana, marijuana holiday almost. That's a big sale day in, in this, uh, field. Other than that, we don't have the big issues, because we do have, again, a lot of P O S terminals that we have staff that's available for it, and we have a system that is very efficient getting patients in and out. We, even planning for this, for the amount of parking that we are looking at, the turnover time for parking spaces, we put our, the time for a, a transaction to be about twelve minutes. In our dispensaries in Pennsylvania, they're about six minutes. From the time that you come in, and then you get called back from the purchase, is what I mean, not from when you park.
Any other questions for this gentleman? It's your former planner.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Every night.
Well, you're gonna stay here, right, if we have questions later?
Yes.
Yes, we're just gonna, we're just gonna sit right here, thank you.
If I wanna set up exhibit or do your preferred location?
Right there.
Right there. Does that work for everybody?
Works for me.
So, Mr. Barry.
So we'll call this A one?
Yep.
All right, and just identify A one so your attorney can talk about it with you, or assist you in talking about it.
Sure, this is an aerial exhibit of the subject property, prepared by myself, um, with today's date on it. And it shows buffer distances from the border of the property at one hundred feet, two hundred feet and three hundred feet. Hundred feet's the, not sure how well the colors translate down the way, but red line is hundred, orangeish line is two hundred, blue line is three hundred. And then highlighting the properties that are in residential zone touched by the one hundred foot line.
So, Mr. Barry, before we get to the exhibit, the board has already, uh, accepted your credentials as an expert in the field of professional planning. Can you tell us how you prepared to testify this evening?
Sure, um, I reviewed the application materials that were submitted to the board. We had probably half a dozen different conversations. We had probably half a dozen different conversations, team meetings to, to review the operational aspects that you just heard about. Visited the property and got a sense of the surrounding areas. And reviewed the borough's planning documents, um, borough's ordinance, and, um, the professional review letters that were issued.
If you'd like, if you could start to summarize and provide an application overview in the context of your planning review.
Sure, so, as you, as you heard, and as you're aware now, the, the property has been approved by the borough for the adult treatment center, the, um, medical marijuana. And the state regulations have, have essentially put a system in place to allow those types of facilities that were approved for the medical licenses to, to flip a switch and become, uh, both a medical and adult-use facility. So, from the state's perspective, they're looking at this as, you know, once you're vetted and, and been approved for the medical license, you're on pretty good ground to move forward with adult use as well. Um, as far as the, the site goes and the, the building and, and the development that exists today, no changes are proposed to the exterior, no changes to the footprint of the building. Parking lot, the drive aisles, the circulation and so forth, is proposed to stay as it is now and as it was when it was the, the daycare. Um, you know, the applicant, you, you heard about, you heard the testimony about the possibility of locating some off-site employee parking areas. And obviously, the applicant would have to seek whatever local approvals are necessary for, for that type of facility, um, assuming that the, the board acts favorably this evening. So, in twenty nineteen, the, the applicant received the, the medical approval, as, as you heard, locally. And, in the interim, the state laws changed to allow for adult use statewide. And borough's ordinance changed to put in place some regulations and standards that would deal with, with adult-use facilities. So, in twenty twenty-one, you had a cannabis overlay zone that was adopted that, um, applies to the C-three, C-four commercial zones, several industrial zones. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the, in the overall context here. From a, a use perspective, when we're talking about the use of the property, really, it's a, it's a matter of customer base essentially. I mean, the use is the same, where there's a, there's a building, and in that building, there will be the dispensation of the sale of cannabis products, whether it's to a universe of patients or a broader universe that includes both patients and adults over twenty-one. So, um, as far as the use goes, this is a unique situation in my experience, we have a, we have one version of the use already approved. So, we're seeking kind of a modified version of that use this evening. The, um, aerial exhibit, uh, that I, that I described, uh, the purpose of that was to both give some context for the property, but also to be responsive to some of the, the distance requirements that are established in the cannabis overlay zone. Now, the property's not in the cannabis overlay zone, so, those standards may not apply in the, the most strict or technical sense. But, they may provide some guidance as to for how to, to review the application, and I think your planner's review letter certainly took that tack, so I wanna be responsive to, um, those distance requirements. The, uh, starting from the outside, the three hundred foot buffer, the blue line is a requirement, separation from a church or a school. We're, we're fine on that. Um, essentially, what we're next to, as you know, is the Shoprite to the west. We have, uh, farm, and then over toward the intersection, the farm stand to the east. And then to the north, we have a couple of different residential properties, um, you know, the open strip that's behind the homes that are located facing Catherine Court. And then there's the, the more townhouse development, uh, that's diagonally across the way. So, um, within two hundred feet, the buffer requirement is a distance from a park. Again, no, no parks within two hundred feet. And then the hundred-foot red line is a distance to residential properties, properties in a residential zone. We have, uh, I believe, three properties that fall within that distance. However, no residential buildings, the uses themselves, um, you know, people's residences are not within a hundred feet of the subject property. Um, as I said, it's a, a portion of the, the farm property, uh, open, open space strip behind the homes on Catherine Court and the wooded rear portions of the properties that, uh, front on, sorry, Green Tree Road.
How, how far away are you from the Together home?
Uh.
Long Green Tree.
Let's see, probably, the blue line's three hundred, and just eyeballing it.
Six hundred.
I, I didn't measure it, let's say s- somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred feet, to the back end of it. And the drive with the front of the house and driveway being further.
Okay.
So, did you include the setbacks, the required setbacks of the building and the buffering in those zones? In other words, the, the definition, the requirement is, is that structure used for any class of cannabis shall be setback. In addition to the setback, in other words, the front yard setback, the side and the rear, um, and buffering requirements of the ordinance as follows. So, it's not just, for example, for residential zone parcels, a hundred feet. It's gonna be a hundred feet plus the front yard setback in the front. So, it'd be a hundred and seventy-five feet would be what you're looking at, not just a hundred feet. Cause the, the definition states that, that, the, the setbacks that are required are in addition to the setbacks for that particular zone. So, the structure, for example, the, the setback for residential, for example, would be, um, a hundred and seventy-five feet in front and a hundred and thirty feet in the side and the rear, because it includes the, the setback to the, to building. So, did you take that into consideration?
And if I could just clarify for a moment on that, those are.
Go back and look at that comment.
Those are the requirements if this were located in the cannabis overlay zone, in one of, you know, the C-three or C-four, is that correct?
No, there's, there's requirements for this particular use. So, these are the requirements and, uh, for the, the class, the, the basically, the, the sales, the recreational sales, which is the use that you're proposing, these are requirements in ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-six for this particular use.
And that use is permitted only in the C-three and C-four, is that correct?
Uh, correct.
Right.
It's not permitted in this use at all, or in this, in this zone at all.
Right, so, the way that we had been reviewing those requirements is that they were for cannabis uses in the C-three and C-four, where they'd be permitted, they had to then also require, uh, comply with those requirements. I think, I probably cut Mr. Barry off, where he was gonna talk about the differences, uh, inherent between the C-three and C, um, four and C-five zones.
So, you're saying, if it's in a zone that it's not required, that these set, in other words, if it's not permitted in the zone, that these requirements are not applicable?
Right, just as if, if something were permitted in this, if something were permitted in a residential zone,
That.
and it had a required setback in the residential zone, and then it were permitted, we were asking for it to be in a different zone where residential was not permitted, you wouldn't necessarily look at the setback requirements from a different zone and apply them in the other zone. Instead.
I would leave that up to the, the.
Well, yeah, I mean, in some ways, you're both kinda making the same argument, because frankly, it's not permitted in the zone, period, the end.
I'd leave that up to the attorney.
So, I thought the gentleman was trying to say, hey, we kinda meet what the setbacks would be anyway, and he started to talk about that. Ms. Adamson properly says, well, wait a second, if you're wearing a zone, then this would meet the setbacks, because you're talking about, you know, the hundred feet plus the zone setback for a hundred and seventy-five. So, you're kinda talking past each other, because you're both correct, but you're not really being, I think, well, I think I understand it, but I just wanna make sure it's crystal clear that, you know, he's trying to make it out that, it's kinda sorta the same thing as if we were in the proper zone, and Ms. Adams is pointing out, no, it's not, and let me put a finer point on it. I, I, is that, am I doing you any justice in that understanding? Maybe I got it all wrong.
Uh, I'm just, I'm trying to state that from the building, um, the, the setback that's required for the residential zone is one hundred feet plus.
Right.
The setbacks for the, the, the building itself. In other words, it'd be seventy-five for the front yard plus a hundred feet. So, from the building, no residential zone can be within a hundred and seventy-five feet of the building.
Well.
So, there is a residential zone, literally.
But I'm, but I mean, but wouldn't, aren't you ma-?
Sixty, two feet away.
Let me understand, but aren't you making that statement if they were in the overlay zone?
Yes.
Right.
Correct.
So, was that what we just said?
Yes.
And so therefore, when Mr. Barry, when we get back to him, we didn't forget you, and we get back to him, cause we've interrupted him, I think he's gonna try to pitch that, hey, they're pretty close, so, we're kinda like that, and you're like, nah, not really.
And I don't agree that they're pretty close.
Well, no, I, I agree, it's like, ooh, you missed it.
I, what I'm, what I'm.
So, let's let Mr. Barry.
There is zero, there's zero feet to a residential zone.
Well, if, if I may, my, my.
There's no separation. In other words, the property line is right up against a residential zone, so there is literally zero feet.
Well, them's fighting words, so you gotta go to Mr. Barry.
So, my, uh, if I may, my, my testimony, and when introducing the exhibit, I clearly stated that there are several properties within a hundred feet in a residential zone. At no point did I try to imply that, that we have.
No, 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 of course.
Right, I was just trying to clarify, because I think I was misunderstood.
Oh, I wanna make that crystal clear.
So, what I, my, what I was discussing was, number one, the distance to a residential structure, and understanding, so I, I must confess, I didn't, are you, are you saying that the?
The, the requirement is, is, in other words, not to a residential structure.
Oh, I understand, I'm trying to.
You need to be a hundred feet from a residential zone. Okay, so, regardless of whether there's agricultural uses in that zone, you have to be a hundred feet from the residential zone. Doesn't matter what's in the zone.
I, and I, I wholly understand that, um.
Right now, it could be redeveloped into something else.
I, I'm completely understood, um, just trying to talk about the situation that we have before us as part of my testimony. So, the, the front setback is sixty-seven point three two feet, so, if we're measuring from the, the building, which I, I apologize, it wasn't clear to me. So, um, understanding that, and push those lines out and additionally feed up, um, I don't have it scaled out here, but I can tell you that it's not a huge difference on there. Um, the fact remains the same, from the building itself, there are no residential structures at this time within, within the hundred feet or the hundred and seventy-five feet of, of the building itself. So, just trying to give a little context, the property, which I'm sure you're familiar with, there's a little bit of a grade change, there's quite a bit of mature landscaping, building setback sixty-seven feet from the road, actually doesn't, it's not really in your face when you go by. The building's fairly, fairly nondescript, um, and the surrounding properties, you have a farm field, you have some trees, you have some open space. Um, we're not right across from somebody's driveway, we're not right across from somebody's front yard. So, that's the, the, the context of the surroundings and the property itself. Um, so, within the, um, the C-five zone, there are, there are standards for shopping centers, which have a minimum requirement of ten acres for, for a lot, that only permit shopping centers, family daycare, motels, restaurants, theaters, nightclubs, arcades. Um, for motels, restaurants, and offices specifically, there's a different set of requirements where you have a forty thousand square foot lot minimum. So, I wasn't sure what to do with this property, if we were a, a standalone daycare center, um, how that, that falls in with the, with the zoning. But, um, as far as, we have a fifty-two thousand or so, fifty-two thousand two hundred square foot, about one point two acre property, plus or minus, that, um, exceeds the, the forty thousand square foot minimum. It has, because of its triangular shape, there's a, a little bit of a deficiency to the side yard setback that's existing, and it will not change from this application. And if the seventy-five foot front yard setback is applied, then there's a little bit of a deficiency to the front yard set- setback that doesn't change as a result of this application. Um, otherwise, the, the lot is generally conforming for the, for the zone, depending on which standards we're applying. Um, obviously not in any way conforming for a, for a ten acre parcel. Um, in, in my review of the cannabis overlay zone and the context of the C-three and C-four zones, those parcels that the cannabis overlay zone talks about, standalone buildings, um, the C-five zone is called the shopping center district. It's really more focused on the, the highway-oriented shopping centers. Um, this property has, feels a little bit more at home, worried to be in the C-three or C-four zone. So, I don't think that, um, its characteristics are inconsistent with what the cannabis overlay zone imagined. Um, as we said, we have a deficiency in the setback to, to residential properties, there's no argument there, it's, it's a fact. Uh, but otherwise, the site itself as a standalone facility, looking at similar requirements in the C-three or C-four zone, it would be pretty much at home in those zones if we were there. So, in terms of what the borough imagined for the types of places where, uh, um, where the overlay might make sense, this property is fairly consistent. Um. You heard testimony, um, last thing about our existing conditions before I get into the variance proofs. You heard testimony, um, about the parking, there are twenty-five spaces on site. There's been the, the representation and the commitment by the applicant that off-site parking to supplement that, um, is part of their intention down the line, if, if there's an approval. And I will cer- certainly, um, continue to work with the borough to make sure that that's done in a way that's acceptable to all parties. So, as to the variance relief that we're seeking, obviously, it's a D-one use variance, so we have to satisfy both the, the positive and negative criteria. The positive criteria, we have special reasons, which are typically dealing with the purposes of zoning. Um, purpose A deals with advancing the general public health, safety, and welfare. This operation as a medical facility today, well, um, you know, I'm starting in October and approved today, um, be operating in accordance with state law. That state law has, um, determined that the operation of an adult-use facility in the same location is appropriate. So, that's consistent with, um, continuing to advance the public welfare and providing this, this service, this facility that the, the voters of New Jersey have decided that they want. And, the applicant has had consistent dialogue with the, with Glassboro, with Borough itself, with the police department, and will work to ensure that their safe and secure operation to promote the public welfare in that sense as well. As to purpose G, which talks about providing sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses, and to set, to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens, so this is, this is new, obviously, it's new to, new to all of us throughout the state. Um, but, it's a, it's an industry that, that will grow and will mature, and as it does, it will become probably somewhat passe. Um, as more and more licenses are issued, as these types of facilities become more ubiquitous, they'll be, they'll be spread out throughout the state. For now, the state has assigned licenses with, with some geographical distribution. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to the gentleman's question about how many there are in South Jersey off the top of my head, but I know they're spread out throughout the state, and, uh, the state has determined that this location is an appropriate place to meet this, this need for the residents of New Jersey. So, um, feel that the, the proposal advances that purpose. And then as to purpose M, which deals with, um, kind of an efficient use of property, I won't read the whole, uh, wordy statute, but, um, when you, anytime you have a, an adaptive reuse of a structure of a previously developed site, that's got some planning benefits. There's, there's, um, you're not breaking new ground, you're not clearing trees, you're not, uh, digging up habitat or filling in wetlands, or dealing with a previously established, previously, um, built site and able to, to reuse that, so there's a, there's an efficiency benefit. As to the, the suitability of the site, um, under the, under the borough's cannabis overlay, which we've talked a little bit about, and as I said, there are a number of consistencies aside from the proximity to the residential properties. Um, there are a number of consistencies with the, what, what the overlay envisions and what this, the characteristics of this site. The ordinance requires that facilities be located in standalone buildings, which, which this is. Um, it's a dedicated commercial site with, with clear access points, so it's not, uh, it's not part of a complicated shopping center where people are coming and going for all different purposes. The borough has issued letters of support and, um, issued the license for the medical facility. So, that the, um, borough, borough powers that be felt that this location was appropriate for the dispensation of cannabis. So, there's already been a, a local determination that this site had some suitability for that purpose. We're here talking about, you know, some of the differences, but the fact remains that in the eyes of the state, the site is deemed suitable, and we, we feel that, that that should carry some weight as well. And as to. And as to the, the conditions of the site in terms of being suitable as a, kind of not, as I said, nondescript building setback, it's got a little bit of a grade change. There are residentially zoned properties nearby, but really the, the views from residential homes, the landscaping that exists today, there's a fence along the property line with a farm that I believe, um, the applicant intends to, to upgrade, um, and additional buffering can be provided if deemed necessary by the, by the board, but I think that the conditions now lend themselves to a fairly secluded private site that, um, meets the, uh, intent of what the cannabis overlay is looking for. As to the negative criteria, the, we look both at the immediate neighbors and the Borough as a whole. The neighbors themselves, I've talked about what, what's, you know, within our immediate distance, we've kinda got the back end of the shop right, the, the loading areas and so forth. I don't see any impact there, the edge of the, the farm property as, as a farm in operation, I don't think there's any impacts there. And then across the street, there's, uh, open space right now, that's the back end of, of several properties that, uh, doesn't appear to be, uh, de- developable, uh, as, as it is today. So, um, broadly speaking, the, you have an experienced operator here that has in its best interest to manage customer flow, making sure that there's safe operations on its site, there's been engagement with, with the police department to make sure that the, those conditions are vetted locally by the, by the appropriate authorities and that the, um, security measures are gonna be in place as the state requires. So that I, I feel that there won't be any, any significant detriments to, to the Borough as a whole or to the neighboring properties. As to, um, the master plan and the zoning ordinance, the most recent master plan reexamination was adopted in twenty twenty, kinda predates the adult use legislation, so there's no surprise that there's not any direct discussion about adult use cannabis. So, um, but generally speaking, there's been some longstanding goals and objectives of facilitating a robust, robust economy, actively supporting economic development in commercial and industrial sectors, and, and this is, you know, in a time when there's a lot of uncertainty with retail businesses and different types of commercial operations, this is a industry that's emerging and, and certainly going to be growing throughout the state in the foreseeable future. And then lastly, the, uh, terms of reconciling kind of our, our disconnect with the zoning ordinance, you know, there was a, there was an approval at the township level supportive of this application as a medical facility. I understand the desire to avoid having these types of facilities within larger shopping centers, hence its omission from the C five zone. The standalone facility makes a lot of sense as far as I'm concerned, which is what our property is, and as I said, it, it does have a lot of similarities in terms of characteristics with properties in the C three and C four zones, and it would be at, at home in those zones were it in those zones. So spiritually, I think that it kind of meets the intent of the cannabis overlay zone despite the fact that it is in the C five zone. And generally speaking, this site's not, um, terribly well suited for development in the C five zone, so, uh, I th- I think we can reconcile the omission of, of the site from the district by not wanting to have the broader C five zone part of the district, the, the overlay district. And also, we understand that the Borough has vetted and approved this site for the medical use, so there is some, uh, some sense that it's already appropriate. So with that, I will, uh, conclude my testimony and take any questions you may have.
Generally, just to summarize, so is it your opinion that this site meets the criteria for the issuance of a D one variance?
It is, yes.
Just to summarize, that requires, like, the special reasons, do you find that there were special reasons?
Sure. Yes, uh, the three purposes of zoning that I set forth, purposes A, G, and M, I feel are met, and that the, the site passes the suitability test, the positive criteria. And as to the negatives, that there are no, um, s- nega- significant negative impacts that we see here, and we can reconcile it with the Borough's master plan and zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
Cool.
I do not have any further questions for Mr. Barry.
Okay, um, I don't know if I've got the right person to answer it, or if it's the other gentleman that was here. Um, you said you have twenty five parking spaces, does that include for your staff and the people coming?
Right, so, um, currently there are, there are twenty five parking spaces on site, and, um, if I, you know, if I overstep in terms of.
We could have Mr. Stanley come back and, and answer that question, it's probably more likely.
Yeah. I don't, I don't wanna speak for the applicant's operations too much, so what can, uh, but I can supplement if needed.
So currently, we are looking for additional off-site parking for our staff, so those twenty five spaces will be available. We've, we've found a couple properties that we feel would work for us, for our staff to park, and we would shuttle them back to the, to the property, to our dispensary from the parking lots, that would be like a satellite parking for our staff.
Satellite parking near the facility?
Near the facility, but wouldn't be walkable.
Okay, suppose that doesn't happen, how many staff members at any one time would you have in a, in a place?
Uh, in any one time, we'd have about twenty staff members.
Twenty staff members?
Per, per shit, because we do have, we do wanna.
And twenty five parking spaces.
But that's, we wanna look for the off-site parking.
And we would be willing to stipulate as a condition of approval that we couldn't open until we had identified and had gotten proper approval for auxiliary parking.
Uh, um. The whole parking thing just, I just don't understand it, not if you have.
Well, you know, we're gonna have our professionals go over their review letter, so maybe they'll touch on that, and, um, we'll hit it again.
I do have a question, um, you've had, from what you said before, you've had six to seven different dispensaries messily in Pennsylvania.
Yes.
Now, um, per, once it opens to the timeline, how often, how long does it usually take for the amount of traffic to come in to the facility? Like, was it like, you know, six months to a year, you see a decrease in amount of traffic coming in as it became more of a social norm in the area? Or does it stay consistently a heavy flow of vehicles coming in and out of your facility at a given time?
It's, it peaked, it, when, when the first, when the program first started in Pennsylvania, obviously with our, our Fishtown location, um, sales weren't that much, there weren't as many products available for patients also. So as more patients signed up for their, uh, medical marijuana card throughout the state, we obviously saw some more people come through. But then as we opened up, like our Potsdale location, which has been pretty busy, we were busy, 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 and then we had other dispensaries open around us, which did decrease our, our volume of patients at our Potsdale location. So as you get more competition, it becomes, we can do sales all we want, but it becomes a thing of convenience for people. The dispensary's gonna be closer to you, you're gonna go to that dispensary. So as, as John was touching on earlier. There's gonna be more dispensaries coming, so there's, the volume, it might be a little bit higher in the beginning, but then as more dispensaries open up, we expect that to kind of tail off in the.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would come, I'm not gonna ask.
Ms. Adamson. Would you like to start?
Uh, I'm not sure if my speaker is working, can anybody hear me?
No.
No, uh, I guess I better speak up then.
Doesn't everybody's spoken?
So, oh, um, so we have a July fourteenth letter, uh, I hope, uh, do the, do the board members have the July fourteenth letter?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Um, we did put together the Balkan area table, and, um, one of our comments was that, uh, we needed a signed and sealed survey, um, to determine what the setbacks really are. Um, because it does, i- i- it does, uh, help the board to determine if, if this site is suitable for the proposed use, if you actually know what the lot area is in regards to what's required, and we do not have a signed and sealed survey. Um, we have a site and utility plan that's from nineteen ninety four, so I just want to make the board aware that, um, this is not a survey, um, I would ask the applicants to testify if this is accurate. Uh, I mean, is this a, is this a survey or is it a site plan? Is this based on a survey, this plan?
The building itself has been, has been, has been previously approved.
So the setbacks are accurate.
I, I don't know that we're aware of it not being accurate, you know, that.
I, n- none of us are surveyors or engineers, so I don't know if we can.
Yeah, and I can't read the notes, unfortunately, there, even if you blow this up, it was emailed, if you blow it up, it's very blurry, it, I can't, uh, decipher the notes, this is what was supplied to my office, so I, I cannot read whether it's based on a survey and who prepared the survey, but just note, it is, this is a site and utility plan, it is not a survey. Um, so that, that was just one of my comments, moving into the letter, under the site plan comments, the applicant did do a very nice job going through a lot of these items. Um, they, number one, uh, they didn't give us a signed survey, but we have a site plan that we base some of our analysis off of. Number two, uh, we didn't get a written narrative of the proposed use, the hours and the number of employees, deliveries, and waste hauling, but we did get testimony tonight. Deliveries and waste hauling, you touched on deliveries, how many trucks would be stored at this facility at night?
There would be no trucks.
No trucks.
Uh, it, there'd be one trace, if we did the off-site parking for our staff, there would be possibly a, a c- a, like a small bus for that, but other than that, nothing.
Okay, so when these truck deliveries come in, would they be parking somewhere?
They, they would pull up, yes.
They pull up, uh, into one of these spaces?
Yes.
So, uh, that'd be two per day, is that what you said?
Yes, on average.
Two per day. Okay. Uh, number three is basically that states that all classes shall comply with the bulk area and yard requirements of the established zones. And for that reason, I put the zoning table in this letter. Um, I did the best that I could to determine whether or not, you know, it did comply with the Balkan area standards, but many, you know, many of these, uh, could not be determined based on what I have, so, um, I don't know if this particular site has the proper, if it's over, what's the, the coverage required. Uh, perhaps the applicant could, could, uh, shed some light on this one.
It has been our position here that this building was previously approved, and whatever the setbacks were approved at, they were built at, and that, that's what they are. Uh, that the site will continue to be as it exists today. The building is not changing, the footprint's not changing, the coverage is not changing, so what it is today will continue, and that, those will be the setbacks and coverage, whether it's a medical use or whether it's also a medical and an adult use. So we understand that we did not provide that information, but we're also not seeking relief related to setbacks.
You know, I, I gotta ask you though, uh, and, and, and Ms. Adamson, hang on a second, right, stop.
But how can, how can we determine if this, this is suitable for this?
Just if you had it approved, right, the building, why wouldn't you have the plan just as part of your application, I mean?
It was approved on a zoning permit, and it didn't require.
Wait, somebody, somebody engineered it?
The, the building itself was previously engineered as part of the approval for the daycare, pre- previously. So we, we applied for a zoning.
So you couldn't get a hold of anything, all right, so th- this is the only, the best you could do, all right, well, that's that, so.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, my opinion is that this is all, you know, in support, would be for you to actually show the board that this site is suitable for this use, because this use specifically states that for a class five, um, the use shall comply with all the Balkan area standards of that zone. So I can't really determine whether the site is suitable without, without, um, knowing what the Balkan area standards are, so I'll just move on. As far as the, the parking, so just to dive into the parking a little bit, for this particular use, we've determined that twenty five spaces are required based on the, the floor area of the building.
Twenty five or seventy nine?
I'm sorry, seventy nine, thank you, seventy nine spaces are required, and you have twenty five. Um, plus additional parking spaces would be required, uh, if there were delivery services. So that would be one per employee plus one per vehicle stored on site, and I, I heard you state that there would be delivery services?
Not from our dispensary to patients or consumers.
Okay, so no delivery services.
So the deliveries, I'm sorry, but I, I misunderstood you, the deliveries I was speaking about were from rural processors to the dispensary itself.
Okay, there's no delivery services, okay.
I apologize, I, I misunderstood you.
Um, so the, the requirement is seventy nine, and you have twenty five. How, how, uh, how are you? If you do not have set up, uh, a, an area leased for these employees and shuttling back and forth, how, how do you plan to handle parking? Do you have testimony on, on whether this site is suitable in terms of parking? How many people are typically visiting this type of use?
We do have, we do have, uh,
Other facilities?
Other facilities that we can, that would keep our parking lot at thirty four percent capacity throughout the day, with how many people that we would see, again with what I was saying, with the online ordering and what we would expect to limit the amount of patients and consumers coming through, um, per half hour, that we can, and with that amount of time, twelve minutes per transaction, that we can monitor how many spaces would be available with that formula, and then we do have a tempor- a an agreement in place, obviously if this goes through, that we can, uh, proceed with further to develop that off-site parking.
But how can you expect the board to vote on something if you can't tell us now that you have some sort of a, a a lease, uh, you know, a lease with an adjacent owner for your staff?
No, they can't, they can't, I, I mean, and, and the, and the strategy may be that they come in, if it works out, it works out, if it doesn't, it doesn't, and then when they get the parking, they come back. Time is money, they don't wanna miss opening day on October, they wanna be selling as much as they can, as fast as they can, I have to presume that that's part of what drives it.
I'm not sure that's exactly accurate, but the idea is, in order to even make the application to the state, we at least need to know the use is permitted. If it's a condition that we have to obtain more parking, then it's a condition that we have to obtain more parking, and we could certainly show the board that is a condition of approval, that we have the required parking, and that may require a trip back to the board with a subsequent application, just like you would do with a bifurcated use application and site plan application.
Okay, I'll m- I'll move on. Um, getting back to the letter again, um, you, you spoke about number four, which is the, the setbacks that are required um, for this particular use. Um, the cannabis establishment shall be licensed by the New Jersey, uh, by the state of New Jersey, you stated the, uh, that it would be? That it's not licensed yet for this particular, for the recreational sales?
Right, it can't be, we have to obtain use approval first, and then we can go back to the state.
Okay, and we sp- spoke about the setbacks, and I just wanna make it very clear to the board that the setbacks are from the building to a residential zone, and, uh, they include the, the actual front yard setbacks, so right now, for example, if you look, um, at the, the side yard, there is less than twenty feet from the building to a residential zone, and a hundred and thirty feet is required, and that includes the a hundred foot plus the setback, uh, for the building, so right now, uh, you know, they have twenty feet, or less than twenty feet, since I can't read the plan, it's about eighteen to twenty feet, and a hundred and thirty feet is required from the building to a residential zone, and although the applicant states that, you know, there are any residential structures there, this is an agricultural use, this property could be redeveloped at any point into a residential zone, and then there would not be the separation that's required for this type use, and that, that concerns me, and I think that.
Well, Ms. Adamson, it, would, would the zone be if it's, if it's a farm, isn't it an AR zone?
It's not an AR zone.
Oh, zone?
It's a residential zone.
Oh, okay, well, that makes it even cleaner, okay.
Um. Right, so, so I, I just wanna make that very clear.
All right.
Uh, that the setbacks are to the residential zone, not the, not, uh, the use. Uh, number five, the applicant. Uh, number five, the applicant gave us testimony that there would be no cannabis paraphernalia displayed at the building's exterior, correct?
Correct.
And we spoke about the parking requirements, six A and B. And there's no other uses in this building, am I correct?
Correct.
Proposed in the building, so there was a childcare there, that's all gone. Um, we did get some, um, architectural, well, we got some floor plans, and I, I may have some questions later, but at this point, floor plans, they show everything that's laid out in the front of the building, but they didn't really touch on what's in the back.
We're not developing the back as of right now.
Okay, so the back is just gonna be storage, or?
Storage and empty space, but we'll be monitoring empty space.
Are there plans to expand into that area in the future, or?
As of right now, no.
Okay. Uh, applicant gave me, uh, us testimony about the sales of alcohol or tobacco, uh, testimony on the consumption of cannabis products, and a signage, you will comply with those, any signage requirements, is that correct?
Yeah, that was, that was the testimony previously.
And as far as a licensed, um, basically number ten says all licensed facilities shall submit a detailed security plan which, which is subject to review and approval by the chief of police and of the public safety committee, uh, which include, shall include all the, the, the following items, so that was submitted to the, the chief of police, correct?
We went over our security overlays with the chief of police, yes.
And do you operate other facilities in Pennsylvania, is that what you stated?
We have six facilities in Pennsylvania.
Has there been, I'm just curious, has there been criminal activity, unlawful behavior, I mean, what type of situations have occurred that could possibly make this?
We haven't.
I haven't been in these situations.
We haven't had any situations, thankfully, um, we've had a great relationship with the, with the local police departments that we've, that we've been in the areas with, we've actually helped local police departments because of our security cameras outside of our buildings. We've been able to help, especially in our Frankfurt area and Elkins Park area, help with other crimes around, around our facility, but nothing inside of the facility.
Okay, uh, hours of operation, the applicant left you that, um. And number thirteen is just all licensed facilities shall be subject to the maximum local cannabis transfer tax and user taxes authorized by the state, is
Yes.
That acknowledged, and, um, lastly, we discussed, um, a buffer for this type of use, which would be discussed at, at the time of site plan, but since the applicant isn't really proposing any site plan at this time, uh, I would leave it up to the board as to whether they think a buffer for this type of use between this use and the residential zones would be, um, necessary. Um, it would be a buffer for screening, uh, maybe a buffer for nuisance, uh, would the board be interested in that type buffer? For this, between this type use and the residential zones that are that, uh, are to the east of the property?
Well, 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 Mr. Chairman, maybe we'll go through the professional letters and then the board will discuss it and you'll put that in the back of your mind.
Right.
Okay.
If I could just clarify, that would be the, the area adjacent to the existing farmland, is what you're saying?
Uh, right, right, yep, the, that's the area to the northeast, which is right now an agricultural use, but could in the future, since it's zoned residential, could be a residential use. And that's all that, uh, I have.
All right, Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, we've heard a lo- a lot of testimonial, tried to, um, a lot of which in my letter has been covered, I'll just try to, um, highlight anything I think might be new, um, that, that we haven't heard. I want to just get to number two and just ask a question of, of Mr. Stanley, uh, along the lines of the number of customers and patients. You, you describe like kind of a, a metered customer arrival like in half-hour chunks. Do, do you know, i- do you know if other operators do that, do you have an opinion on why, why do we so often see lines, it's, you know, extensive lines of customers? Can, if they, if it can be, if customers can be scheduled, why, why don't there lines, any idea on that?
Um, I don't know why they do that, I think a lot of people just kind of open up the floodgates for that, for that kind of operation and take whatever they can get as part of it, uh, also, those dispensaries, there's not a lot of other dispensaries around that area. What we've seen with some of the other dispensaries that we've looked at that we feel are a little bit more on par for what we could expect around here, that we would expect a lot less than some of the places that we have in Belmar, like the Trulive in Belmar, which is one of the larger dispensaries in the state, is the largest.
M- Mr. Costello, if I could just, I, I, I think what's happened, just, you know, 'cause I have another life where I represent applicants too, and you meet a lot of people. But I think the idea of having appointments makes good sense, but at the end of the day, people just show up. And so I think therein lies the rub, so they can make all the appointments and ask for all the structure, um, and have a great plan, but if a whole bunch of people show up, so now you got the appointments and all the people who show up, that's why you get lines. And you're not gonna be able to do anything about that, if you have something which people wanna, what you wanna buy, it's like the car wash after a snowstorm, you know?
Walgreens, I'm sorry, Walgreens, I always have to wait at Walgreens.
You know, so.
It's normal, it's life.
Okay, touch, touching back on parking, I just rementioned the number, seventy-nine parking spaces would be required under the ordinance, twenty-five provided, and then, uh, it was talked about in the planning letter, but I, I had cited the side yard setback as well, um, one hundred feet from the, uh, the, the farm property, which is a residential zone, although under the, um, a, a different interpretation of the setback in the ordinance, it would be a hundred and thirty feet would be the setback required, whereas I'm, I'm seeing it as, even on this reduced size plan, would be about eighteen feet is what the setback is from the residential property. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless anybody has any engineering questions for me on, on the application.
Any other questions from the board?
Um.
All right.
Any questions here? I didn't really hear anything about lighting, um, something of this magnitude, uh, I know that you deal with a lot of cash, a lot of people. Is there any provisions for in- increased lighting, high visibility, visibility lighting, anything of that nature?
We do have increased lighting outside of the dispensary, but even just in the parking lot, nothing that would project out onto the streets or in the surrounding areas, just in our footprint.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'm gonna ask this one anyhow. Um, question, if you get a lease for off-street parking, and at the end of the term of the lease they decide not to renew and there's nobody else around, now what?
I suppose, I suppose the board could stipulate the length of the lease for, I suppose the board could stipulate that the lease be over a certain length in time, you know, not a year or two years, but a much longer term if you were so inclined to approve the application subject to obtaining such a lease.
Because, I mean, parking's of value in Glassboro, there isn't a lot of it, but there's a lot of people and not a lot of spaces, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On that road that it, that it's on, um, of course the parking's an issue, we've addressed that, but I don't even think you're allowed to park on that street.
No.
No.
So where would the cars go?
Good question.
Like if, if a line developed, there's nowhere.
They just, they sit there and wait for somebody to move, if somebody pulls out and blocks that line because they wanna make a, a left-hand turn and they, on that side of the street, it's a right, everything just stops, there's no pulling around.
I'm just saying on that road, even if, uh, there, because there wasn't a spot, so everybody's lined up near the road, that essentially kind of would be like parking on the street, and you're not allowed to, you wouldn't be allowed to stop on that street, even if you were waiting for, I mean,
Do that, yeah.
I've never seen a car parked, uh, pulled over on the side of that road, ever.
I'm s- I'm sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Um, we would have, as we were talking about, outside security, that would be working with traffic control, working with cars that would come in, and for your point with the left-hand turn coming out of the facility, if it's something that we could work with zoning to make no left-turn signs coming out of the facility, which we've done at some of our other locations.
Right.
Um, our Yaden location is on a, a road called Church Lane, which is a very high-volume, small road in that area. They average, I think it's two and a half accidents per day on that road, and that's something that we worked with their, uh, police department with and traffic planners with
But the number of people on the ass, they're still gonna have a lot.
to make it as safe as possible, because we have a drive-through window at that location as well. And we also set up proper signage that they didn't have before, left turns only, right turns only coming out of here. We added additional speed bumps throughout the, um, throughout the drive-through area, stuff like that, so we are willing to work with the, with Glassboro and with the new Spaly to, to do all that stuff, put up signage if we need it, that's something that, that we wanna do, we wanna make it as safe for everyone as possible, that's the main thing. Again, that we go back to a new store for people to be able to come and purchase their medicine in a safe environment.
Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to open this up to the public?
So moved.
Sure.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, okay, anybody from the public would like to speak, please come up to the podium and be sworn in.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. Do you swear firm testimony about to give us true and correct to best knowledge of information, belief?
Yes, I do.
Would you give us your name?
My name is Stephen Rowan, I live at six twenty-five Willow Court, my family owns the farm next door to this property.
Okay, so take it away. And when you say your family, you're part of your family, you're one of the owners?
Yes, my father and mother and myself all own different parcels of this farm property.
You're just being generous, right, there you go, right, and now you're handing something up, what are you handing up?
Photographs of the property next door, and I'm here.
So, so, listen to me, okay, I guess, I'm gonna interrupt you, go give one to council right now, so council has one. And then continue, and then we'll all have one. And we'll call this Rowan one, and he's probably Sean, yep, I got you, Rowan, hard on.
Excuse me, Mr. Rowan, Mr. Rowan. Can you give one to the professionals there?
I only made ten copies.
I know, I'm gonna give mine, and I'll take one of those.
I'm sorry, I was.
That's okay, just for the professionals, one on one.
Mark, do you want one?
And it's exhibit, what I'm starting, Mr. Adams?
Oh, Row, Rowan one.
I'm mainly here tonight to ask for help. This property's been left derelict for more than six years since Chesterbrook Academy went out of business, and the fencing is original in wood and in deplorable condition, and the landscaping has not been maintained. I'd like to read my letter to you. Dear Borough of Glassboro Zone Board members, for your consideration in the matter of rezoning application for the property adjacent to my farm's family's private farm in order for this applicant to conduct retail sales of cannabis products, I would ask that you take into account some basic security and privacy requirements to be made to the applicant's property. First off, fencing replacement, if you look at the photographs, the existing wood fence is over twenty-four years old and is rotten fence posts and many missing, damaged, or badly warped fence panels. It is in very poor condition and needs replacing. I would ask that a new six-foot-high solid height privacy fence and posts be installed all the way along the property line between our farm and this applicant's business property, from William Dalton Drive to the rear of their property. Um, I'd also ask that the landscaping be replaced and fixed, the existing wild growth, dead and half-dead trees. I counted rate at the hedgerow at the edge of the farm, over twelve dead trees and bushes. It's poorly maintained, and the dead trees need to be removed, and a simple hedgerow of evergreens, such as low maintenance, are providing, be planted in order to provide some privacy screening between the properties. In some of the pictures there, you see where bushes had been and died and removed and never replaced. There's no privacy screening between the properties at all, really, right now. Um, my third issue is parking and trespass. In previous, with the daycare center, anytime they had any kind of event, everybody came over and at the farm it parked. And once in a while I wouldn't mind, but they back up into my fields, they drive over my crops, they park on my lawn, even if it's pouring down rain, they make a muddy mess. I have no interest in my property being used as extra parking for this business. I'm concerned that the volume of customers for this type of store will likely exceed the existing limited customer parking capacity on their property. We maintain a modest grass parking area for our pick-your-own-business directly adjacent to the applicant's property. Additionally, our adjacent farmland consists of thirty-plus acres of orchards and fields, an inviting place for the applicant's customers to use for their own purchase, such as walking in a park. For safety reasons, no overflow parking or trespass can be allowed to occur on our adjacent actively farmed property, it is not a park. The rezoning applicant must be made responsible for control of their customers' parking and potential trespass activity. Provisions of appropriate no parking or no trespass signage on both the applicant's property and the periphery of our property, and maybe additional physical barriers like a split rail fence along the edge of the road, or other methods may be used by the applicant's business to address this issue. Thank you for your consideration of these issues. I also do have concerns about this setback. My farm is zoned residential, I love farming it, but I don't know if I'll be able to farm forever. And if it is sold and developed as residential, I don't want the value of my property reduced because of this setback that's not being met. Um, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan.
All right, so I'll just say for the record that you read your letter to us, thank you, and that you submitted five pages
Okay.
of color photographs, each page having two photographs, and those photographs depict what you talked about, which were some fence pictures and
Some pages have four photographs on them as well, and it shows dead, dead trees.
Oh, you know what, hard, hard on you did, you, you, you tricked me, there's one with four photographs, yep.
Dead trees and the existing fencing.
There you go.
In addition, the existing fencing zigzags back and forth, and I had an objection to that when Chesterbrook Woods developed. I don't understand it, I don't know how they expect to access and maintain the rest of the property that's only accessible from my side of the property line. I'd like this new fencing put in on the property line, one straight line between my property and their property. What they do on their side of their property is their business. Um, it, it's cleaned up, it needs fixed up, it needs some privacy planning. Um, I'd like to see, you know, some landscaping plans, um, some improvements, and, and a brand new fence would really be nice. So, and, and the parking is a huge concern, but any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rowan.
Thank you for your considerations.
Is there anybody else from the public?
Will the public session be closed?
If I could, I, I hope I'm not starting, I, we would like to address Mr. Rowan's concern.
Will us close the public session?
Yeah.
He may want to engage in more dialogue, but I will leave that up to you.
Well, then you should've done it when I was up there, I, I remember.
I may.
Go ahead.
So, to address Mr. Rowan's comments, I'm just going to ask, the fencing replacement, can we replace the fence?
We could replace that fence on that, on that side, Mr. Rowan would wanna work with you.
I would really appreciate that, it's, it's been repaired so poorly so many times, and it's in such poor condition, I do not wanna see it try to be repaired again.
Yep.
You know, if it could be replaced with a nice new fencing and some evergreen plantings put in to provide a buffer, your business, have your business, I have my business, I like my privacy too.
I understand.
I'm willing to work with you, but I need some upgrades to the, the property, you're doing a wonderful job.
All right, uh, Mr. Rowan, you got your fence, so that's not even an issue. You know, the, uh, the reason they're here is for use variance, so that's what the board's tasked with.
Yep.
That's what they're gonna figure out.
Motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If, if I may, if you would indulge us with just a five-minute recess, because there's
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, if you would indulge us with just a five-minute recess, because there's If, if I may, if you would indulge us with just a five-minute recess, there's been, I'm sorry, if you would indulge us with just a five-minute recess, There's been a number of comments by the board, although, uh, would you run?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's speak to the rest.
We'll adjourn for five minutes.
Thank you.
Five minutes, Mr. Harv.